Invisible Liberty and Dursus for All.
We have approached the night. All the parties.
Nice.
Monica, fine from River Street Land. And so, what we are trying to do is then go.
The first thing I wanted to give you was a follow-up to our last meeting was an additional item regarding looking at your property maintenance law and abandoned buildings law to give you guys a sense of what we thought existed in your current law with regard to both abandoned buildings and property maintenance laws. What I found was that indeed you do have an abandoned unsafe buildings law as you saw it, and it is the current standard for that law. So I think in that regard, your current law is in good shape regarding unsafe buildings. In terms of property maintenance, you address exterior property, so the land in your property maintenance law, but you don't actually address buildings. So one thing that we would recommend, because that seems to be coming up regularly in the meetings, was whether there's anything you could add, would be what I propose here. And this is something, it's a one-page, it's very simple language that you would drop into your chapter 90, which is property maintenance in your code, which would better address or give your code enforcement officer and the board a little more ability to address the exterior of buildings that become deteriorated. It is somewhat discretionary. There is not something that I've been able to find that really gives you direct cause of effect actions for specific types of maintenance issues, but this would give you a little bit more ability to address those concerns as they came up. And so, I mean, it's quite simple. It addresses the exterior appearance of the actual building structure, making sure there's not rot and unsafe conditions in terms of the exterior buildings. And then if a building becomes vacant for a certain amount of time, ensuring that the building is properly maintained, which is also in your unsafe building. You have some of this. It's a direct reference to also some other things you already have in your law. And then the last item also, which relates really to buildings and structures that have to be maintained, that are unoccupied, that become hazards. And hazards include broken doors, windows, openings, unsealed areas that you have six months to remediate that, or you as a board and your CDO could address those things if they're not taken care of within six months. So it puts a timeframe on how long buildings can sit there in an unsafe condition. Other than that, there's not a whole lot you can necessarily expect to do that this doesn't provide. This provides you with the tools, allows you to do what you need to do, but then you have to do it. So that's kind of, so it's pretty simple addition to the other things we've recommended. I think it goes well with the other things we've recommended, and it would be a one minor addition to the other edits. Actually, it's actually an amendment to a different chapter within your code. This could all be taken under consideration with the zoning chapter edits and done with one, in one shot, with one seeker, and be done with it all in one shot, or you can decide to take this up separately at a later date. It's entirely up to you. But this would be my recommended add, and I don't really think we need anything else at this time. I did try to find language related to situations where you would have buildings like your current situation, where you have a building that burned a while back. Most community demolition laws deal with bringing sites that have, like, for instance, if you had foundation, open foundations that were never dealt with, that you have to bring those foundations, you fill those foundations and bring them to a 24-inch height. But beyond that, there's nothing really across New York State that I could find that directly addresses bringing sites back to perhaps just, you know, dirt or grass or something like to that, to that level. Communities don't seem to really regulate it to that level. I was actually kind of surprised, because I figured somebody did, but they don't. So that's my recommendation, at least include this, maybe revisit, you know, other things if they come up, but for now, I think this would help with property maintenance. So that's, that's.
So just to kind of take the board back to where we are, we, the board looked at the final revisions of the River Street compared on the zoning code changes, including the design guidelines and standards, and then all the other changes we discussed. We sent them off to Attorney Renee about a month, well, probably over a month ago. And I know Carol's out, so we're not quite sure, but tentatively, we have, we're hoping to do the public hearing on those on, at the October 17th board meeting, which I guess means they need to be back to you in local law form by October 3rd, so you can vote to schedule the public hearing. So what Monica presented, you were really some choices. I mean, you could choose to, if you agree with this, to just ask Attorney Renee to include this as another local law change, and then as Monica said, pretty efficient, one public hearing, one seeker, done. Or you can choose to do it separately on your own timeline. If we're going to get it done with the grant funding, it does need to be done by December. Or you could pop it in the folder for changes in the next round of zoning code revisions that, you know, may be coming down the road, so.
Question?
Yes.
I read graph E1.
Yes.
Unoccupied hazards for the purpose of subsection says, bottom line there, it says, no construction work has been formed for a period of six months.
Right.
You start something, you don't finish it. No, I'm not a burnt building that's going to sit there for at least six months before we can do anything. That's my point.
Yes, you can make that shorter if you would like. You could certainly make that shorter if you would like, yeah.
Now, are you referring specifically to the building that burned?
Well, look what we went through with the Holland, and what we're going to go through with up here. I mean, he's sent registered letters and everything. We have heard absolutely nothing.
Right. You know, you go through that process, which is your unsafe buildings process, exactly, where they can go through the letters, you make every effort to get ahold of them. If you hear nothing under that, there's not a timeframe for that. You can move forward under your existing unsafe buildings law. You can move forward on that. So.
I think there ought to be fines in here, hefty fines.
Well, we could.
Apparently, there's none in the state of New York, because you would have probably told us so.
Well, this, you is, you already have your property maintenance law. This is just adding a section to that. You have your property maintenance law with fines, et cetera. And off the top of my head, I don't know what's.
There's no fines.
There's no fines?
That I can see.
No, I think there may be some, George.
Pardon?
I think there are some fines in there.
Yes.
I think, but I'm not sure.
Right. Well, if not, I can certainly, let me, let me look at that to see if there are any. If there are not, we can add something. This is dropped into your existing section.
The point I'm trying to make is it's got to have something there to force this people to move.
Well, you know, George, I asked Monica specifically to take a look at the issue of the burned buildings that stay. And she said, that's really not so much property maintenance. It's in that unsafe building code provision that's pretty standard for New York and is already in our law. So, and now, so you're saying there's no waiting period? You can move right through that?
You, no, yeah, there's no waiting period. The process for unsafe buildings is that you, I don't know off the top of my head, but it's, you send registered letters. You make every attempt to get ahold of the property owner. You give them time to respond, but once you've made that entire effort, if nothing happens and you don't hear from them, you as a community can move forward in dealing with that building. So there's not a timeframe for doing unsafe buildings. There are some fines. They're not strong, but they're here, so.
So, but this would be in a different, this is in the village code?
That's, no, it's in your, well, it's in the village code under the, off the top of my head, I don't remember what section unless I buttoned.
But that law's already there.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
So, now, having said that, if your fines are not up to date.
They can change them by resolution.
You can change them, that's something to keep up on, because if, if your fines are weak, it's like, people don't care, you know? It really helps to keep up on those. In fact, what I do with a lot of communities when we do a zoning revision is take all the fees and fines and all those things right out of the code part, so that you can update them as needed. And it's just done by the village board and it's not written into your code. For fines, you know, New York State only allows a certain amount in fines anyway. Under the law, you have a range of fines you can charge. Communities that haven't updated their code in a while are probably at the lower end of what you actually could be charging right now. That is across the board, and it's one of the first things they say, when you do this, can you update our fines? Within what we can give you, it's only a certain amount, New York State caps the fines. But I would, I, if you would like to update your fines section, I would highly recommend it, because these, today's dollar, those fines are somewhat meaningless.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll leave that as a decision for the board to make to let me know which direction you want to go, if you do want to include it. We should probably get it down to Tom.
It's going to take me five minutes to just put the resolu, you know, to just change the format of this one page, so it's not going to.
Yeah, I think it's a good thing.
Do you think it would be possible if we just added this one page for him to get the document back to us by October 3rd?
Well, I, I know it's possible. It's all he has to do is correct it, not fail.
And I believe, I believe it's a matter of word processing, because Monica sent out the Word doc of all the changes.
Yeah. I mean, I sent it in a format that looked like your format, but.
Is that correct?
Well, I tried to make it, in keeping with your format, to make it as easy as possible for him to just send it back to you.
Well, we have a list of items after the last board meeting, we go Tuesday, that Carol was going to check on, I believe, with him. And I wonder if she's going to, will she call into the office or send while she's gone, or?
I think so.
So maybe we could ask her if she calls tomorrow, or we could somehow get ahold of her to see whether or not she's spoken with him. And then you'll know, George, when you call him, if she had any discussion with him about that, because I think at the last board meeting, there were a couple of things she said she was going to check on, so maybe it would be worthwhile to do that.
It would make, you know, I certainly, you don't want to go through a seeker in a hearing for this one page.
No, no. I like to put it in with the other things.
Yeah, exactly. You did discuss it the night that we had the public hearing, whenever you was here, so. It's come up several times. In fact, it seems like, so, you've done your diligence on that, I think. I think so, too.
I said, will you be talking if Carol calls tomorrow, will you be talking to her?
Yes. Just let me know what you want.
What I want, what I got to get, you've got to think, right?
You might have to bypass Carol and call Renee directly.
Well, I'm going to talk. I got a couple of other things to talk to Renee about, so.
Put that on your list, I mean, I know how it is to talk to a attorney, if you don't write it down.
Say anything else, ladies.
Yes, actually, I have several things to update the board on and bring to your attention, which I'd love to hear.
I've got to talk to you.
Oh, okay. Good, thank you. You're welcome. I, um.
I could call you ten times tonight.
I got your message. You said you'd talk to me tonight.
Yeah, I'm glad you got the message.
Okay. I, I thought since I needed to be here to ask you some questions, anyway, I would give you an update on where we stand on our projects. And so, the first project is the one that Monica has already spoken to you about, what we call the 2005 BTF project, because that's the grant that's funded. She talks about moving the zoning code revision forward. Sounds like we're going to do the property maintenance change at the same time, which is wonderfully efficient. We do have some decisions to make about the remainder of the money. And in fact, there are several decisions I have to ask you to make rather quickly, because I don't know how closely you follow this, but the world has turned upside down with Governor Cuomo's regional council process. There's a strategic plan being prepared from, for the North Country region, from Plattsburgh to Watertown.
Oh, it doesn't include us.
It does include us, and, and north, and, and, no, no, and it is the entire top of the state. And so there are some decisions the board needs to make about including data in that. As part of the strategic planning process, they have thrown most of the grant applications that local communities turn to for economic development and community development money into this consolidated funding application process. They already do on October 31st, so that pushes the deadline for decisions up a bit. So those are some of the things I need to chat with you about tonight. But I thought, before we get into anything new, I'd just quickly run through where we stand. When we finish the codes revision process with River Street, we're going to have about $10,000 left in that 2005 BTF grant that has to be spent down by the end of December. And that is supposed to be used to investigate organizational structures to advance revitalization. Basically, to look into what we can do to help business development in the village. Now, just to let you know, we, this grant technically expired on June 30th. We've applied for an extension, which we have been given a reassurance we will get, but it's not there yet. So the board chose to go ahead with the codes revision, knowing that, because she thought you wanted to get it done anyway. And I believe that you will receive your extension. I have not seen one denied, even on older grants, but I just did want to let you know. And the match for this grant is already in place. It's the money for the paper installation that the guys did three years ago on Lake Street, and all the Main Street banners and benches and so on. So that is offset. So knowing that business development has been a concern of yours, and I know it's something you'd like to address, we talked a little bit before about the possibility of a micro enterprise grant application. This is a new program. It used to be a micro enterprise loan fund, and now it's much easier for communities to deal with, because you don't have to run a revolving loan fund. You can just make grants directly to businesses. Okay? And it is something that it can be $20,000 for the community to pass out in chunks of up to $35,000 per business. More than half of it has to go for new business development. I believe the rest has to go for businesses under five years, but we're not finding that in the guidelines, so that may have changed again from last year, but it is for new business development. So if you wanted to submit this application, we could have River Street do it and fund it under it being a structure to advance business in the Village of Rousas Point. So we're anticipating probably four to five thousand in cost out of your remaining 10, depending upon if you want River Street to attend the two public hearings you have to schedule. And in terms of administration of the grant, that can all be funded right out of the grant. So you can have someone run that for you, and it's pretty, it's a pretty labor-intensive process, because businesses have to apply, they have to have their credit check, they have to go through training, they have to do a business plan or at least an outline of what they want to use the money for. So it's, it's pretty labor-intensive, but it can be handled. River Street's run micros before.
You would bring somebody in to run it for you. You're not expected as a community to sit there and do your business plans and run credit checks. So you typically would have somebody come in and do that. Because it's now a grant program, beyond that, you just want to make sure that you meet the criteria, that the business meets the criteria, because it is a job creation type program, that the business is going to meet the guidelines of the program in terms of, you know, what they're, what they are as a business, and you just want to make sure you get all of that right. And it is labor-intensive, because you do need to make sure they, the business will need to attend some form of business development training, which can be an existing program somewhere in Clint County. That can be paid for also with, as part of their, their money that they get can go towards that training if they're associated with that. So there's really no, and then no cost to you as a, as a, other than the upfront grant writing. The rest of it can be folded in to the grant. But it is somewhat labor-intensive, and you would want to make sure that there's a, there's a program here to submit for.
But that grant writing aspect would be covered under that 3000.
Yes, it could be in this case. You're lucky you have that, that full money to pull from.
Yeah, yes. If, if we were to do this and get this $200,000 grant, what is the timeframe in which we must, well, grant that to businesses?
Two years.
Two years, okay.
I, I did one of these in Tupper Lake. The money flew out. I mean, there was no problem, but we were not constrained by new business development in under five years. So even businesses that had been seven, 15 years in business were able to say, you know, I want to do this expansion, I want to buy this piece of equipment, and there's no, there was no problem. The money's really flexible. It can be used for equipment, it can be used on a building, but it can be used for equipment purchases, advertising, operating capital. It's, it's pretty flexible money. It's a tremendous tool to have as you're trying to bring a new business in. I wish I had it when Chris came in a few years ago, but it's, it's a really nice thing to be able to offer.
And I would, you should look at it that way, not just, not just to help the existing businesses that are here, but that when you're looking at your competitiveness with your neighboring communities, what do you have to offer that some other community doesn't have? Well, if you have this program, that might be the difference. I mean, I know a community that I've worked in that has a micro, a business that started in Troy, said, I wish I had realized, the neighboring town is Waterford, I wish I had realized they had a loan fund, or I would have just gone five miles down the road and set up the same, you know, restaurant there. I didn't know they had that. And I, you know, so it can be a tool to bring new businesses in, so you should look at it, not only helping who you have, but setting aside some of it for prospective businesses.
Yeah, and you can take some of that grant money and educate the potential businesses, right?
You have to, in a sense. You can do it internally, but if you have that structure set up locally or within, not too much shouting business from Rousas Point, and there's a decent training program where you can get accounting helps, business plan help, marketing help, all kinds of tools are typically available through, like, small business development centers and folks like that, community colleges. It's probably already in place for you somewhere. That would be the best bet, is to identify somebody that already exists. But it can be, but you can do it internally as well.
And we, you know, we would, we can build that expense right into the grant. And here, we have Small Business Development Center in Plattsburgh. Don't know if they would do the course work, but AEDC in Serenac Lake came and ran a course in, in Tupper Lake. They might be willing to come and run a course in the north, you know, in Clint County to broaden their exposure. We would definitely be able to get that covered. And it, you know, it is, it's a requirement, and that's the important thing, that everything else there hatches with this money. The businesses have to do the nine weeks of training. It's, especially if you've been running a business for a while, some of the people, you know, what do you mean, I have to write a business plan? But it, it, it's a requirement. There is a job, either, either the property owner has to be low or moderate income, the business owner, or they have to create a low and moderate income job. So I mean, there are, there are requirements that go along with it, but again, it's a, it's a nice tool. So, do you have any questions about the micro grant?
What was the company you sent in Serenac Lake? Is it AMA?
No, the Adronak Economic Development Corporation. It's a, it's a CDFI, it's a community development finance institute, institution. They do training. They used, they used to do it more regularly. They're still, they do a couple of courses a year up in the Trilates. And they have a 14-county service there. I'm on the board, so I, that's my area, but they, I think they might be willing. I think they're interested in this, this kind of work. And, but Small Business Development, they may be able to put a program together, too. They've been very good here in the village. They've helped us out a lot, so. So I'm, we're not going to ask you for a decision on this tonight, because even though it's a very tight timeline, I know you're just being hit with this, and I wanted you to have some time to think about it, but if, if you do need, do want to go ahead, we would need to know by Friday, because there are two public hearings, all the paperwork has to be done, there has, there's some out, a lot of outreach that has to be done in order to make the financing case, and we would need until the 31st, we need to get it all done, and entering the computer, because the notifications are all going in on a brand-new, brave website. So, so.
The public hearings for this, just, basically, you're holding a public hearing to say, give us your, your input on the Village of Rousas Point doing a micro enterprise program. That, you know, that's what the, that's what the public hearing is, you just have to give people a chance to comment on your submitting this grant application, and you have to hold two of them. They can be back-to-back, there's no timeframe requirement in terms of when you, when you do them, other than your own notification in the newspaper, so it can be post, post-lytied, but that, that's what that has to entail, not, not anything more than that.
So I'm hearing all positives, is there any negatives?
Well, there, there, there is a negative. There's a, like, there's a cost to everything. I'm going to talk, actually, a little bit about in general, about the revitalization effort, and what I see is a really major choice that the board and the village face, because there's oversight. You're responsible. You can hire Monica to do it, but you're responsible for it. So there's some, you know, there, there is a cost to everything, so that, that's what I think I wanted to.
And you would, we would need a local point of contact that would, you know, like, if you were to hire us or, you know, somebody like us, if we're, if we're not based here, we would need a point of contact somewhere within, you know, the village organization or somebody like Melissa or somebody to be that conduit to us, because we're not here all the time, and there will be things that come up. So you would have to identify, you know, there is that, and also have. You don't want us to, you don't want to pay to have us come up here every week.
Better have a liaison up here.
Right.
Do it over phone, or review.
So let's just sit through these other couple of projects and then kind of get into the heart of the matter in terms of your, the choice we have to put before you. On the DNH, we're still working on the re-did from that meeting we were at a couple of weeks ago. It's value engineer, we've got the cost down to be about $50,000 away from what we have for cash. That's by the architect's estimate. As soon as we get more word on the windows, and the IEP, is that what you need to talk to me about, on the windows, we'll be coming back to the board to just get your sense of moving forward. There are, I, we're not going to get that cost, we're not going to get the architect to say the cost is down even, because they philosophically don't think that replacing the B-board and the windows will save us money over restoring the B-board and the windows. The contractors told us otherwise. I think common sense tells us otherwise. Every contractor we talked to said there was tremendous uncertainty. They didn't know how much work it was going to take to make those windows work. They didn't know when they were going to fall, and they tried to pull the B-board down, would it, would it fall apart? So, I mean, I think there are savings there. There, we have the hope of perhaps a little other funding from insulation, maybe. We do know we have maybe a little bit more money to tap into, so we may be asking you for what, you know, if you want to roll the dice and put it out there again. We, the contractors are more familiar with it, they are going to have four weeks instead of three, you know, they know how much we have spent now. I mean, that all should help bring the cost down, but that'll be a decision. I'll be back, and I'll have more information for you, and I just want to leave it ongoing. The one thing, the other thing to be thinking about is that if we go with the approach we have, it does leave some volunteer or village effort, you know, probably doing some painting, some finished woodwork inside, maybe some demolition of that, the addition in the back. So that will be something else the board needs to go into with eyes wide open, because then there's a commitment on the flip side. We can't get our money back from DOT till the project's done, even the volunteer part of the village work. So just, you know, I'll be back, but those are the things kind of brewing on, on that project. Veterans Park, we are rapidly drawing that project to a close. The mayor's taking care of getting the grass planted, so.
Done.
Done already. Done already. It'll look nice for our Veterans Day ribbon cutting. I'm doing, you know, making a decision about the memorial circle. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to go down and look at it. We have been through quite a saga of luck, put it in, it wasn't right, they fixed it. It still wasn't right. They fixed it again. Well, they, they say now it's the best they can do. And so we have a decision. Do you want to accept it? Do you want to accept it with a credit? So you get $1,500 knocked off and you get an extension of the guarantee. We're going to get them for another year of guaranteeing it. Or do you want to have them rip it out and put it back in? Personally, I hope you don't choose that one because I don't think it's going to be great with the site if you do that. But those would be your options. And that's all spelled out here. Don't make that decision tonight either. And sooner rather than later would be good so we can, we can wrap this thing up. But that's, that's the story on the memorial circle. Now, when the project advisor committee worked on this, they really wanted to acknowledge the branches of the service. We had hoped to have that low wall, which unfortunately we couldn't afford in the budget. The medallions for the branches were going to go on the wall, but without the wall, we didn't even put it on. So I spoke to the mayor. It might make sense to do a stone monument with a plaque like we did down at the pier. We need something for the EPF money anyway. We have to acknowledge that we got the EPF grant to do the project. We can do, you know, put that near the benches. There's a nice spot for it where people could sit and look and, you know, see the medallions. And we rededicated the park. We put all that on there. So that's all explained in number three. Again, don't make a decision on that tonight, but within, you know, a week or so, it'd be good to get that going so we can have it all done for Veterans Day. Any questions on the site down there? Because I'm just going to quickly go through the grant stuff and then.
That wooden fence, is that going to be stained?
Probably not. I don't think we did the one at the boat launch. I think it's just natural, the weathers like that. Now, do we have a sealant? Let me check.
I don't have a sealant.
Sealant's ringing a bell. Okay. I'm writing something down, George, because otherwise.
Check what's on that thing.
Too much brush in there. I go, what are you going to do when that all goes up? The trees?
It's going to be beautiful.
They might have to use a hand mower. They might have to use a hand mower.
See what's going on inside.
They're all metal trees.
Is there a reason why the west end, that the timber barrier on the west end only goes partway back? It seems that that one corner is very open.
Don't know.
Did you notice that or anyone noticed that?
I did. I, I don't know. My guess would be that it's meant to be a barrier to cars. And so that would, I don't, I don't know. I can find out.
I was just curious and just walking through there. It looks too short. It almost looks like someone mismeasured.
It doesn't get, I'll go with the fullest. Let me try and conceive that to add, it's according to the plans.
Let's take a stop sign up there too. They put the white tape down. They like to put a stop sign there.
Stop sign where, George?
Going into the street.
From the parking lot?
Yeah. If you take a look, they, they put the wide white tape to stop.
Right.
But there's no sign.
Do you show a sign or do you put out of the drive or a parking area?
I don't know. Something, something has to do, summed up.
There's no sign at the boat lot.
I know that. We don't have a white line either.
So I think we should save the money at the side account, not for the side.
I will check. I'll check on both of these. Okay. In terms of the grant, now this is funded from our 2006 EPF grant. The mayor already has a letter that's already in my mailbox, ready to go to Department of State to ask them to take the gateway, the beach, old beach site out of the grant so we can close up the grant. And also a request to a loan for a fee reduction because we're not going to do construction down there.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will, I will get that. In order to close this grant out, I will need the accounting from the village as our, of our match to be able to do a budget amendment that we always need to do to be able to close these grants out. So if I can get the in-kind labor, materials, equipment use, then I can total that up and see what we need to ask for for that budget amendment. And this is another grant that ends, expires at the end of December. So we want to get that going also as soon as we can so we get your money back. Okay? And again, there are the decision points. We talked about what you want to do in the memorial circle and about the monument and the plaque. Arsen has the grant accounting breakdown on it. There's about $9,000 in state dollars left. If you take the credit from luck and you get your 1,500, then there's, well, $10,000 that is available to purchase in case you want the monument and the plaque. Okay. All right. Now, I told you a little bit about the Regional Council strategic plan. It is, it's really something to see a region this big, seven counties, pulled together and put a plan together. It's, it's a very important act, unless you, George, because the governor has decided that money that used to flow right out of Albany from Empire State Development is now going to be sent to the regions. So we'll either have $40 million or $5 million to spend. And the strategic plan has to have priority projects for where that money gets spent. So the first thing I need to ask you is if you have any tourism projects that you want. Michelle Powers from the Clinton County Chamber of Commerce is co-chairing the Tourism Development Working Group. She contacted me specifically to ask if Rouse's Point had any projects. Also, I would recommend that you list the Pfizer site as a, as a site of interest, even though there's no prospect. You want it listed in the strategic plan so that should a buyer come forward, you can swing that Empire State Development money and other aid into helping out the buyer. So those are, are two things. Kind of framing that is the, the discussion I needed to have with you. I probably should have been in here a couple of months ago. And that is about the work that I have done for you over the past few years, first when I was an employee here and then when I became your consultant. And that's the general revitalization advancement stuff that I do. Assisting new businesses with questions. I get calls from all the state agencies, the chamber, other regional agencies, like the questions about what you want in the strategic plan. The Pfizer stuff and the project development. Oh, did you know you won, George? At least you think they'll call you?
I've custom rededucted.
Okay, good, good. Helping get the application in for your award. Working with DOS on plans for the 2009 grant, talking about what you might want to do in 2011. This is all, these are all activities that were paid for out of an old grant that we closed out in March. It was the 2007 EPF grant. We closed it out. The village was able to get reimbursed. As a matter of fact, I think, Arsen, we just got notice that that money may already be here, but the first payment's in the mail. The second will, will arrive in six to seven months. It's also in the mail. And what, and I, so I needed to talk to you because that pot of funding expired. And I know that the board didn't allocate any additional money. So I technically for about the past June, July, August, almost four months now, have just been donating those services to the village along with helping get the information together for the audit. So that's over, it's out of 30 hours. And as much as I appreciate all the wonderful start you guys gave me, it's really not proper for me to be acting on your behalf when I'm not under contract. It, it's, it's just not the practice for you as much as anything else. And so I wanted to bring that to your attention and, you know, I also need frankly, I need to replace income so that, you know, I have, I need, I need to support my business. So from what you'll need to let me know at some point in the near future is what you'd like me to do with the calls, the questions, the emails I get. And this kind of gets into your question, Dennis, about the, the cost of this. I, I see the, the village at really kind of a critical point. Are you going to proceed with the revitalization effort or not? We have projects, you know, we will get this DNH project done. We will wrap that up. Veterans Park will actually be completed and wrapped up. We're going to finish the, the work we're doing with Verba Street. And then basically the project work is done. So the question is, where does the board go from there? And it's a, it's a big decision because as much as most of it has been covered by grants, it hasn't all been. And there is, there is a cost. There's somebody on the board in the community has to be the champion in the effort. Somebody has to oversee what's going on and, and spend all the time learning about it and answer my emails and calls and give approvals. So there's somebody on this board when George leaves. If you want to continue the effort, we'll have to step into that role. It is extra work for the DPW guys. We use their match all the time. It is. It is a little extra work in the office. It's a little extra work for Arsen. It is not cost free. And so I think the village needs to take stock as to whether or not it's worth it for you to go ahead. Because the time, I mean, right now, we're at the point where either an investment has to be made or you, you go in a different way from here. And you have, you have staff that's very capable. You have people that can help out. That's really a question for you, for you to decide. So what I, the last thing I need to bring your attention to because it's also on a deadline and it's related to this, is the potential for waterfront funding. We have talked, I talked to the board, I talked to the mayor, I talked to Brian and Arsen about trying to go after additional money from the local waterfront program. When we get the DNH done, the inside of the building and the exterior shell will be done. They have to be for our grant contract. But the site work is not within the budget. And so what I proposed was take the value of the underground electric work on Pratt Street. Put ornamental streetlights in from Pratt up to the station. You're probably looking at $150,000 would be my guess from having seen what Montgomery Street cost and having seen what streetlights cost. Whatever that matches, apply for a 2011 grant for money to finish the DNH station. You tie it all up together. You have a connection with the ornamental lights up to the station. You can get money to continue the revitalization effort. You can get money to implement the recommendations for what to do. We have that 2009 grant to try to figure out how to leverage the difficult properties in the downtown of the waterfront. You could use, you could swing some of that match in to that grant. It's, it's all there, but it's, again, it's a decision for the village to make. And unfortunately, this one is also on kind of a tight timeline because it's one of the consolidated funding applications. It would have to be filed by October 31st. So that's another one that if you do want to proceed, you would need to let me know on that one by Friday. Because otherwise we won't be able to pull the grant application together in time to get it submitted. So there you have it. Do you have any questions for me before I just run through kind of the key decisions again that, that I'll, I'll need from you?
We're going to probably have to have a special meeting between now and Friday. But we could, you know.
It's a lot to process, don't you think it is? So again, the only really truly urgent decisions are the grant applications because of the tight funding deadline. And that would be the micro and the waterfront grant. But again, you know, really I want, I do really want it to be clear that I'm, I'm here as your consultant presenting options to you. It is a big job. I mean, there is a commitment on the village's part. And so if, if it's not the time, then, you know, and you wouldn't in some way be committing a future board to continue with the effort. So, and those would be the kind of the two key things. Also, the, if you want anything listed, and I will take care of that for you. If you tell me, make sure Pfizer's in, I'll do that. If you want any of the tourism development projects in the, the plan, I'll take care of that for you. That's not a problem. So past that, you know, we have a couple of weeks to make some decision. You have a couple of weeks to make some decision. Let me know.
Couple of days to make most of them, but what I, I have a question. What, I guess I don't really understand because I haven't really read about it. The, what is the purpose of the Regional Council strategic plan?
Okay. The, it, I think it's, it's a, it's a, it's an interesting idea. That I'm serving on the Regional Council Planning Committee and the implementation subgroup of the Planning Committee. And I'm co-chairing the working group, Community Development Working Group. So I've had an opportunity to, to get more of the information because it is, it's so much changed so fast. But the theory is, the governor has said, instead of us deciding one size fits all economic development from Albany, we're going to free up money. A lot of it's tax credits, some of it's cash. But we're going to free up development assistance and put it right into the regions. So your strategic plan is doing two things. First of all, it is, it should be your plan for where the $5 million, if you get it, or the $40 million is going to go this year, and your plan for the next few years over where it's going to go. And it's, it's very similar to what we did. You develop the vision. Then you look at strategies to get there and you look at priority projects to advance the vision.
But you do it in two months.
Right. Except you do it for what region in two months.
You're talking about between $5 and $40 million from the region, Placard to Watertown North.
Correct. And that's the second part of the, the strategic plan. There's a competition between the 10 regions in the state. Four out of 10 are going to get $40 million. The remaining six are going to get five and change million. So.
So then when we get our $5 million here in northern Maine, who's going to, who decides how that money's allocated?
The Regional Council.
And who's on the Regional Council?
Well, it's co-chaired by Gary Douglas and Tony Collins from Clarkson. It has a variety. I mean, there are business owners. There are Callie Brooks from the Adronet Community Trust that I work with in Lake Placid. She's on it. It's a, it's a, Dory Kurz is on the council from the Development Corporation.
So I guess my real question though is, well, I'm not asking it very well, but I'll try again. Let's suppose we include these key tourism projects.
Right.
Do we need to write a project to the village?
Good question. If you were looking for, for a share of that $5 million, I would be coming to you saying, if, let's say we had a buyer for Yip, we had a redevelopment prospect. I would be saying to you, "And we need to do an application for money for that project." Unless you're, I don't see our projects that we, if we had a buyer for Yip, it would rise to that $5 million, you know, to be eligible for that $5 million level. What we're doing is putting a placeholder in the strategic plan so that next year, if there's something or if something comes up, it hopefully lets resources be swung in there. So, and the, the community development projects, like our tourism, you know, if we were going to do, not that much left to do in terms of infrastructure.
Well, let's say we wanted a reasonably nice franchise hotel.
Hotel.
Okay. Would, would there be assistance for that?
That, I don't believe that you would be able to get into that $5 million pot because those aren't truly supposed to be transformational projects. And I think many communities in this region would also like the small flag hotel. But there's small business economic development grant money for a business that's going to create five to 25 jobs.
And you can apply, you, you would then apply the business, but actually you're applying directly for that business.
Right. And so. So what I'm trying to do is, is in my work with the Community Development Committee, what we've all done is try to make sure that we place, we, we place projects in so waterfront revitalization is eligible. Because now all our applications, they used to just go straight to Department of State, are now going to be scored by the Regional Council. And 20 out of 100 points gets allocated by the Regional Council. I think they would like to feature Rouse's Point as a key tourist destination in Clinton County. Chris served on the Clinton County Destination. Sir, I'm sorry. It still serves on Clinton County Destination Planning Committee. They saw Rouse's Point as, I think, just one of the areas of biggest potential in the county.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And I was, I suggested to Michelle Powers last week at our tourism committee meeting about possibly doing like a little welcome center or kiosk at your border crossing here because so many people just come to my shop and ask for things to do. because so many people just come to my shop and ask for things to do, ask for pamphlets for the area. Auburn has a beautiful welcome center. Not much going on over there. Rousas Point, I think, is a key spot with the bridge and the border. So that was one thing I recommended Michelle put into this tourism project was even a, just not even a man's, you know, welcome center or just a kiosk so people coming over can stop. You have a nice area to pull off and they can get out and look at things. So that was one idea I gave to her for Rousas.
So you're on the tourism development working group with Michelle or on the destination?
Okay. Well, the Destination Mass Plan was part of the Chamber of Commerce you recommended.
So, so, you know, I think they'd love to see just a general description of what Rousas Point is going to do. Again, it gets you that mention which helps, you know... Did that, I don't know, did I answer your questions, Cal? I will tell you, this was put out very quickly and a lot of it's being understood and developed as...
No, I think you did. I just, I guess I'm still not understanding if, maybe I do understand.
Yeah, I think you probably do. I think you're trying to wrap your mind around it and, yes, it is true.
Well, I guess I'm just wondering if we decide to do this and we have, because it says we need a decision, should be submitted as soon as possible, right? Do we give them a list of things?
Oh, you, well...
I guess that's really what I, what would, it seems like we have nothing to lose. I mean, we can try to be a share of the money or not, but what's, what do we need to do in order to become eligible or even in consideration for this part of the five million?
There's an online survey that we could fill out that would talk about Rousas Point's project. But the thing is, we would, you need to have, we need to know what we'd say we would want to do.
Well, that's my question. What do we...
So, well, I mean, you have, you could include, I mean, if you want, if you are going to go ahead and file that waterfront grant application, I would be sure to flag that as a, I mean, you have the international border crossing for the train. You're creating a pathway down into the downtown. I would put that in as a project. I would definitely recommend doing that. I would go back to the downtown and waterfront plan and, you know, look at anything else you want to throw in. You've been invited. I mean, that's a, that's a very nice thing that you recognize as, you know, an area of... I think most communities would like to do tourism. Rousas Point can do tourism because of the setting.
Your answer to a welcome center, that first grant we got way back when, when I had to go to Lake Tours for a presentation, included, that was one of the things that was included was the welcome center. That first two hundred thousand, and I don't know where that went. The overall scheme thinks. Nobody knows.
Built some nice bathrooms.
Whatever.
Down the boat lodge. The boat lodge is maybe it's nice. It's nice water.
You're probably right.
So I, anyway, so that, that's it. So I am, I am pretty much available some of the time. So if you need anything, you know, if I can help you with anything and any questions, let me know.
I have one more question. Well, I actually have two more questions. This ten thousand dollars for the project completion, if we did, if we did not decide to do the micro enterprise grant?
Right.
What's it worth to us? I mean, what's the ten thousand dollars going to do for us if we don't go with the micro enterprise grant?
Well, you could use it on the rest of the activities that we, that might be part of that. You could, and actually, I would recommend you use the remaining five for that. I would recommend that, Chris is, I don't know, if, Chris is a local business owner. There are a lot of other people who have invested in the downtown. I would recommend that, you know, you have River Street meet with the business owners, identify their current concerns. I really think we should look at a 485B program so that improvements in key area properties don't get added on to taxes. You can do a sliding scale. So let's say, you know, Ray do pre-fixes up his building. He knows that the cost of those improvements are not just going to automatically get added to his assessment through village taxes. I mean, your village taxes are not a huge part of your tax burden at all, but it's a nice gesture to make that, you know, you're going to, you're going to give people five years of sliding scale in tax breaks. So that kind of work could go on. Basically, it's almost making, making a plan to, okay, where do we go from here? And if we can think of, if we can think of things to do within the five, I think, I think that, you know, we could probably make the case for actually doing some things.
That's for sure. Recede, Merrick, change of date.
Sure. Melissa, on your window.
Yes.
I have put I E P, Ed, Marvin, and contact.